The time has come for the Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, regular city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Donnellworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Item B, implication by Hamas Ibrahim from the Urban Muslim Minority Alliance, affectionately known as UMA, and immediately following that would be the pledge. Podium, sir? Thank you. Good evening. I am Hamas Ibrahim, and I will be reading Surah Al-Fatiha. Bishmin lahirakmanir rahim. Auz b'lahimine shiitane rajeem. Bishmin lahirakmanir rahim. Alhamdulillahir rabbil alameen. Arokmanir rahim. Malikiyom edin. Iyyaka naburo yakanastain. Idina surat al-mustaqin. Surat al-ladzina an'amtualaihim. God romag dubi alaihim. Waladu alim. Ameen. In English, "In the name of God, the gracious, the merciful." Praise be to God, Lord of the worlds, the most gracious, the most merciful, Master of the Day of Judgment. It is you we worship, and upon you we call for help. Guide us to the straight path, the path of those you have blessed, not of those against whom there is anger, nor of those who are misguided. Ameen.
Thank you. All rise for the prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Great job. Item C, mayor's comments. Start off. First of all, everyone, I'd like for everyone to say hello to our new team member. Hosway, where are you at, Hosway? All right, say hello, Hosway. Hosway is our new Assistant Public Relations Director, working under the leadership of David, and we're going to go on from there. Congratulations, welcome to the team, sir. Next, Labor Day. How was everybody Labor Day? I touch, I ta, I take it that everybody had a fantastic Labor Day. The weather was awesome. And with that being said, I just want to acknowledge and honor the hard work, dedication, and the resilience of Waukegan's workers. Their contribution, contributions build and sustain our community. Also reminded of the dignity of work and the progress we have achieved together when we value fairness, opportunity, respect for all as we work to rebuild our great city of Waukegan. Uh-oh, the world's largest rubber duck was at, yes, and I was blown away by this one. But it was at our harbor, everyone. They didn't want to get down, get a chance to get down and see. If not, you missed a great opportunity. I think we had, I was just talking to Joe, roughly about thirty-five hundred to about five thousand people down at our harbor. Right? The largest rubber duck, I think, in the world. Is that right, Joe? Yes, in the world. And some, someone told me already it is subject to come back, or projected to come back, 2028. So, get ready. With that being said, oh. Joe, and I'm saying this to Joe and everybody in here, because that was successful. I truly believe for 2026, we need to have something, something else to bring, you know, to get us ready as we move into the winter months. But just something to put out there, Joe. With that being said, I'd like to recognize the fortieth anniversary of our Waukegan Harbor. And here to receive that is the General Manager of Port and Harbor Operation, Mr. Joe Settleman. And I think the Chair, the Chair of the Waukegan Port District Board, Mr. Jack Dye, for a special recognition. Are they, just you, Joe? All right? Do I have to take the mic, don't I? We'll go to the middle, Joe. Yeah, and we have to bring him here so his cupscouts can lead us in pledge. All right. And it reads for this special recognition from the City of Waukegan to Waukegan's Harbor. This special recognition is celebration of your fortieth anniversary in the City of Waukegan, signed by our Clerk Janet E. Kilkelly and the Mayor Sam Cunningham. So on behalf of the Mayor's Office, the Aldermen, all the citizens of this great community, we say thank you for your dedication and service to our Waukegan Harbor, and we look for nothing but more exciting things like the rubber duck. All right? Thank you, everybody.
I just want to thank the public for participating in the event and coming down and enjoying the harbor. We're going to try to do a lot more of these events in the near future and try to get a lot more community involvement. And I really appreciate the partnership with the city. They made everything so much smoother, and this was really a testament to the fact that our property and our lakefront can hold that many people. It was a great event. We had constant traffic throughout the day, but no incidents, and really just a great traffic flow. Great job by the police department, fire department, everybody involved.
I wish I had that many people at my ice cream store forty years ago.
All right, everybody. Our kids are back in school. So what does that mean? As you all know, that we have neighborhood schools, particularly elementary and our middle schools. But even at the high school level, where our young men and young ladies can be a bit more observant when crossing the streets. However, what we cannot do, and we're going to be a strict enforcement on that, correct, Chief? Strict enforcement. Those bus signs, stop signs, they mean stop. Now, you cannot stop if you're flying thirty, forty miles an hour down these school zones. Now, this is not about penalizing anybody. It's about recognizing that our young men and young ladies are on their way to school, and we have to be cognizant of who and where they're at. I'm passionate about this because I've just seen some, some videos of cars. I don't want to say they were purposely doing it, but their attention span just was not there. But when that stop sign of the bus is out, you must stop. And I, I think we all agree. If everybody in this room, and certainly throughout this community, have either son, a daughter, granddaughter, grand, niece, nephew, that attends not only just our public schools, but all of them throughout this county, specifically in Waukegan, we're, we're going to be, we're going to be aggressive on that around our school zones. So I'm asking you, please, please slow down. And in the spirit of slowing down, as you know, there are many ongoing construction projects in our roads and our alley. You know, just like the school zones, let's slow down around these projects. I personally was out there on Belt, on 120 Belvedere, for, for those in Waukegan, and there was a water main break. And, you know, it's pretty, pretty tight up in there. But man, the cars just act like there's those, the yellow bumpers weren't even there. And more importantly, our public works employees weren't there. The last thing you need is to make a vital mistake or something you might regret, to injure one of our work, workers, and certainly even worse, it becomes a fatality. So let's just be conscious around the work zone, but more importantly, around our school zones. Here is some exciting news on this one. Aldermen, pre-construction meeting regarding the improvements ahead for Washington Street Commercial Quarter will take place September the 8th. Nobody's clapping. September the 8th. But I did say Washington Street, right? So, Chris. So, listen, September the 8th, Chris, Chris Garland, with the understanding tonight is on the agenda that it passes, but Chris Garland and his team will be sitting down with the individuals who will be awarded the, the contract and just talk about beginnings, what needs to be done, and close out, and open it back up. That's going to happen on the 8th, if I'm not mistaken. So we're excited about that, and certainly, as I was moving through, coming back and to being in this particular position, those are one of the things I, I, I was just on. I, I, I made commitments on. And thanks to all of us, those commitments are going to be, are going to come true. This is not, as I said before, the rebuilding of Waukegan is not about Sam Cunningham or individual Aldermen. It's about all of us, from the mayor, the legislative body, to the taxpaying citizen. This is our win, not a win. RFQ, Noel told me to make sure I say this. We're excited to see the concept and ideals presented in these submissions from developers interested in helping us to redefine our downtown lakefront. They're open, and I think we've had, we've had some, some type of interest already. But Noel just wanted me to make sure that we reiterate that. And the last due date to submit your, submit your proposal is September the 8th. Is that correct, Noel? All right, everybody. So Noel tells me, I'm telling you, if you have any questions, see Noel. Noel, raise your hand, just so, she's convincing, I promise you. All right, if you do not like this, then you are missing a great opportunity. Northern Illinois Air Show. Let me make this, let me, the Waukegan Northern Illinois Air Show. And this year, everybody, it's going to be two year, two days. It's going to be September 6th and September 7th at the Waukegan National Airport. Gates open at 9:30 a.m. Air show starts at noon. Tickets only are available online. Kids 12 and under, active duty and military veterans are free. Mr. McLemore, I'm pretty sure you're going to be attending. Join us for the public opening of the Sharing Our Shore Waukegan Art Exhibit Through the Eyes of the Piping Plovers, the Flora, and the People of Waukegan Shores, Friday, September 12th, 2025, 2 p.m. to 3 p.m., the Waukegan History Museum, 1 North Sherden Road. For those who don't know, it's the old Carnegie Library. All right? Oh, it was, it's been, and it's being presented by the Lake County Autobahn Society. Hispanic Heritage Celebration. Many events are planned in Waukegan in celebration of the holiday season. Concerts, live performances, social events, and/or parades will be happening the weekend of September 13th and 14th. For more information about these and other updates regarding these events, please take a look at our website, waukeganiil.gov. We will be working cer, certainly will be working closely with the event planners as all of the other things that's surrounding our, our state, more specifically the Chicagoland area, comes up. We just want everybody to be mindful that things potentially can change. With that being said, we had an opportunity to talk to the Council General of Mexico and, from the, in the Chicagoland region. I, along with city staff, connected with the Council General of Mexico and Chicago, Ms. Reina Torres Mendevol, and her staff this morning. We have established a good dialogue with them to ensure that there are clear lines of communication. We also want to help our community identify and communicate local and area immigration resources. The bottom line is, everybody, we understand what the temperature is around our community. For me personally, I think it's sad, but it is what it is. Now we need to manage to what it is. And we must be very, very deliberate on our messaging and clear so there is no confusion as relates to our residents, business partners, and, and residents, the business community, and other business partners. You know, from the earliest days, Waukegan has been shaped and strengthened by its immigrants who've come here seeking the opportunity, building industries, building neighborhoods, and traditions that laid the foundation for our great city. That legacy, as we all know, it continues today. As immigrants remain the beating hearts of our community, contributing their talents, cultures, hard work to keep Waukegan vibrant, resilient, united for generations today and in the future. As the mayor, and I'm going to say, and council, our responsibility is to ensure the safety and well-being of all our Waukegan residents. I keep, they have the word in here, I, I want to say we. We want our community to know that while challenges may arise, we will face them together with courage and with resolve. The people of Waukegan do not hide from fear. We stand up and support one another and continue building a city that reflects our strength, our resiliency, but more importantly, our pride. I like to say, not only that's my stand, but that's our stand as we move until this situation is past us. But if we stick together and stay focused on operating and leading our residents through this, this too shall pass. Those are my comments, thank you. Items 2A. Proclamation. You're going to love this one. Payroll Week in Waukegan, September 1 through 5, 2025. Are we reading the proclamation?
Your, your call.
Mayor, we've already presented that proclamation.
Okay. Okay, then.
It is on the public record, sir.
All right, it's on the public record, on the public record. So proclamation, Payroll Week in Waukegan, 1 through 5. Thank you. Item 3A. Audience time. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have a number of people talking today. You have three minutes. We're going to start with Chuck Rostalis, Rayon Edwards, Amy Grossman, Diane Verratti, Calvin Mathis, and Frank Pettis. Go ahead to the left side, no, my left, east side of the, of the room, and be prepared. Chuck Rostalis, Rayon Edwards, Amy Grossman, Diane Verratti, Calvin Mathis, and Frank Pettis. And let me get that timer up for you. Go ahead, sir.
Chuck Rostalis, another three minutes, I guess, from committee to now. I've got about four items to talk about. One, I talked to my Alderman, Alderman Newsom, suggesting that this 1% grocery tax is coming up in committee the next meeting. I would suggest that we have the ability to offset any 1% grocery tax with cannabis, casino, and video gaming taxes. We don't need to pass on another 1% on grocery tax to folks. I think that will increase the businesses as well in Waukegan. People will come there because of a lower tax. Gurnee is applying a general sales tax increase to make up for that 1%. So I think we should eliminate that 1% and rely on the casino and video gaming taxes to supplement that. The other item that was talked about was farm animals, chickens. I've been down to Austin, Texas, where there's no rules. My other, my third daughter lives there, and my son-in-law. And I could just tell you that they have a 10,000 square foot lot. And chickens and other farm animals that are close by are very much a nuisance. So it would suggest that you, you restrict that licensing, certainly by lot size, at least. The environmental committee met tonight. I want to make sure that they, they incorporate the land use comprehensive plan that was done with Mayor Cunningham and a previous administration into their UDO. And it will eliminate the, let's say, coal ash, ETO, asbestos, PFAS that you have in your committee, the chemicals that are in that area, and integrate land use with UDO. The City of Chicago has already done that. I've got an example of the full ordinance from them. And the last thing I have on here is that I think the, we need to take these complex issues that, that are causing real deaths and health issues in our community. And for many years, there have been community involvement on this that can help in these committees. So if these committees cannot handle it, let's form a commission to do this. Last thing is the audit that I got from the treasurer.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rayon Edwards.
Last year.
Thank you.
Good evening, Community Council, Mayor, and all of the elected officials. Caught off guard, I supposed to be resting today. I forgot today was a meeting. But I wanted to thank you, Mayor, your staff, your Chief of Staff, the Fire Department, and the Police Department for everything, for the Southside reunion. It was everything and more, right? Over 1,200 people outside in the park, kids playing and having a good old time. A special, special thank you to two of my favorite ladies, Ms. Kin Kelly and Alderman Florian. I appreciate both of y'all. Everything that I do, both of you women always find a way to support and help in any way that you can. And I want to let you know that it don't go unnoticed. So I appreciate y'all. And the next meeting, it'll be official. But tonight, I'm glad I didn't miss this meeting because I made it late. And I think on one of the agenda for the committee that we are creating a Class G liquor license, and we are getting ready to award three more. We talking about rebuilding Waukegan. How do you do that? How do you do that with alcohol? I, I just need somebody to give me the assessment. I need somebody to explain it to me, and I don't care where you putting it at. How do you do it with alcohol if you are killing the people of this community? So I'm just going to pre-warn all of y'all right now as we speak, and a petition is being created, and we will have it in this community by this weekend. Because I'm tired of asking to stop it until you figure it out. Towing, records, charged. Guy had an incident, bumper in the back. He had to pay $250 for the release form. He had to pay $620 to get his car out of towing. And if he didn't get it before 4 p.m., it was going to be another $60 storage. What are you Aldermen's going to do? Is we rebuilding like that, taking advantage of the people that's already hurting? That is ridiculous. When 14% of the people in this city is living in poverty, how can they afford these fees? So I hope records is watching because we would be creating a petition about them too. And I hope you Aldermen start doing what y'all supposed to do. We elect y'all to advocate and to speak on our behalf, and we do not want records charging us all of this money. It is disgusting, and we cannot afford it at all. Thank you, and see you guys soon.
Thank you, sir. Amy Grossman from the Waukegan Public Library.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amy Grossman. I'm the Deputy Director of Waukegan Public Library, and I'm excited to share two new initiatives launching this month at the library. First, September is Library Card Sign Up Month. If you don't already have a library card, now's the perfect time to stop by and get one. Getting a card is free, it's easy, and it opens the door to so much more than just books. You'll have access to our Makerspace technology, our new Library of Things collection, movies, kits, and thousands of titles to read or stream. All Waukegan residents and business owners are eligible for a library card. To celebrate your library and everything it can do, we are launching the Show Your Card Initiative, which is in the flyer I passed out to all of you. During September, if you show your library card at participating businesses, you'll get discounts and special offers, all while you support local Waukegan businesses. So check out the flyer for more information, and of course, more information is on our website as well. Secondly, I'm pleased to announce that the library is launching our own 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten initiative. 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten is a national nonprofit that's sole focus is to promote reading to newborns, infants, and toddlers, and to encourage parent and child bonding through the love of literature and reading. The goal of the program is to expose young children to books, which helps promote general good reading habits and the ability to be ready to learn when kids start school. As many of us know, numerous studies estimate that as many as 1 in 5 kids struggle to learn to read when they reach school. And before then, parents and caregivers are their child's first teacher. So the library is a great place to initiate that learning. While reading 1,000 books sounds like a lot, if you start when your child is a baby and read one or two books a night, and yes, you can reread those classics over and over and over again, same book every night, you'll complete the program before your child is five years old. The library has tracking sheets to keep track of the reading, fun prizes for the kids for every 100 books they read, and a display wall with all of the kids' names so they can track their progress as they move along the program. When they complete the program, they will receive a Welcome to Kindergarten backpack full of books and school supplies. So if you have a young child in your life, I encourage you to come to the library to visit, sign up, and learn more about this great initiative. As always, thank you for your time this evening. I hope to see you soon at the library. And if anyone wants to take a picture with the giant library card, I will be in the hallway after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Verratti.
Hi, I'm Diane Verratti, and I'm here to extend an invitation to you, elected and appointed officials, as well as audience members and those watching from home. Waukegan's award-winning Park District and the Waukegan Historical Society have received some well-deserved accolades this year with the grand opening of the Waukegan History Museum at the Carnegie. This phenomenal restoration speaks to our city's long history and has already been recognized as one of the jewels of Lake County. The celebration of Waukegan's history will continue this month with two, not one, two special events. On September 20th, the annual Oakwood Cemetery Walk will be held on the beautiful grounds on the south side of the city. This year, visitors will experience stories from 1925, including Al Capone's connection to Waukegan and a presidential visit. I've been privileged to volunteer as an actor a number of times for this event, and I look forward to welcoming many of you to hear about Waukegan's history. Several of us will share as if we were actually present in Waukegan 100 years ago. I have portrayed ladies from the Victorian and Edwardian eras, as well as from the 1940s and 50s. This will be my first appearance as a fashionable flapper of the 1920s, and I plan to help bring to life the creation of the Genesee Clayton Building, the future home of the also wonderfully restored Genesee Theater. Please plan to join us on Saturday, September 20th, for a lively review of some of the interesting events in Waukegan's history. Then the next day, Sunday, the 21st, you'll be able to enjoy the annual tour of homes. This event invites you into some of our beautiful old historic district houses to glimpse the architecture and grandeur that make them so special. The tour has been attracting people from all over since 1969. Information and tickets for both events are available on the Park District website. Click on Events to purchase the tickets, and I do hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Diane. Calvin Mathis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The last time I was here was not so positive. I want to acknowledge Mr. Martinez. That was a great apology. I appreciate that. It shows great leadership, and I, I can't say enough about it. You just took responsibility, and I don't hold that against you. People make mistakes. Your acknowledgement was, was, was accurate, I, I think, and I appreciate that. And I just want to point out to you that that's just great leadership. And it's not about, leadership to me is not about not making mistakes, but as fast as you can acknowledge your mistakes, you're that much better a person. And believe me, I've been there. I'll, I'll be coming up on six decades in this year, and I've learned a lot. And that's one of the lessons I've learned, to take responsibility when you make a mistake. The longer you wait, the harder it's going to be, and the, and the worse it's going to be. So I, I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I wish you well. I, I saw you in the barber shop, and I congratulated you. I wanted everybody to know that, that I wished Mayor Cunningham well, and as I told everybody here, all our leaders, if you do well, we do well as a city. And that's what I'm rooting for. And, and I just want to say that in public. Going forward though, as a city, I think, I know we had this debate about city manager, and I, I had a stance on that, and I wasn't forward, but right now, that was then, this is now. I think we do need some type of, I'd just say data analyst. Really, not for a city manager. Anybody can, if you go through some training, a basic training, you can learn how to analyze data. And we need to look at data for the city to know how to go forward. If you're going forward without analyzing data or having somebody on your staff that can analyze data, that can tell you where the city is heading, you're not, you're spinning your wheels, you're wasting your time. Data is, is king, is gold now. That's Elon Musk. Mayor, I appreciate those words that you said. They were comforting for as far as what's happening in America right now. In fact, that's why Alderman Martinez got my attention, because we're walking into, we're already there, fascism. And that's one of the elements about spying on your neighbors and this and that, that, that's one of the elements of. But I appreciate those words, Mayor. Maybe it made somebody feel much more comfortable. It could have been a little bit stronger, I think, because the law, we don't want to go, we're in a lawless society as far as the federal government is concerned. And that's just clear, that's what you pointed out. But in the state, maybe we'll make it, I don't know. I don't know what the future holds, no matter, no more than anybody else. But I wish everybody the best, and I, like I say, I'm moving on to, to other things. And I, I just wish you guys the best.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis. Mr. Frank Pettis.
All right. Good evening, Council. Just want to shout out Brother Mathis. Man, that was a beautiful comment. Shout out to Brother Martinez as well. Frank Pettis here. Just wanted to give a quick update on the Recycling Education and Outreach Program. This is a collaboration between my organization, SWALCO, and the Metro Mayor's Caucus. So we've been working diligently, right, going over the data with LRS. They've been doing an awesome job of keeping, keeping the data on recycling rates and contamination rates. And we've narrowed down our, been tagging to two routes right now, right? So in about a month, we're going to get started on two routes, on the first and the second wards, right? So I look forward to working with Alderman Guzman and Alderman Bolton to, to not penalize people, right, but spread awareness through investing in public education around recycling and the need to reduce, right, the contaminated sites around us, as Mr. Rostalis mentioned. So as I said, we're about to start in about a month. If anybody's interested in getting involved, right, we, we do have some paid opportunities, but we're encouraging the community to come out. My email address is frank, F-R-A-N-K, dot Pettis, P-E-T-T-I-S, at ilclimateandhealth.org. Yeah, and I think that's about it. Thank you. Quick comment.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. The next group will be Luisa Carranza, Pedro Dominguez, Margaret Carrasco, Clyde McLemore, Elizabeth Marrero, Sierra Cunningham, and Michelle Lopez. That's Luisa Carranza, Pedro Dominguez, Margaret Carrasco, Clyde McLemore, Elizabeth Marrero, Sierra Cunningham, and Michelle Lopez. Go ahead, Luisa.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Luisa Carranza. Simplemente vengo a invitarlos, hacerles la invitación para este domingo, 7 de septiembre. Tenemos un certamen de belleza.
Hi, my name is Luisa Carranza. I'm from, I invite everybody here on, for the 7th of September for a for, to a beauty pageant.
Son tres categorías. Es niñas pequeñas, señoritas, y señoritas de tercera edad.
There's three categories, there's young children, teenagers, and then older teenagers.
Les estamos haciendo la invitación para este domingo, 7 de septiembre, a partir de las 5 de la tarde, en La Canoa, in Washington and Green Bay.
We invite you guys this September 7th at 5:00 PM at La Canoa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pedro Dominguez.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. And also, I'm volunteer about to the Fiesta Patrias, just I want to invite everybody to, to parade, to ours parade. So it's the first time, and also, we have the permit, but I want to invite everybody for the, for the parade. It's the first time, I have, living in Paris City around 27 years, and I love this city. And it's the first time we're going to do the parade, and we're going to join Waukegan and North Chicago on September 14th, and we start by noon. And the parade is going to start by Belvider 120 and Jackson. And we're going to tour in Dargon, Street 19, and we're going to finish in Lewis Avenue and 14 by Paris, Paris Hall. So we're going to have music, really good food, Mexican. So I want to invite everybody. We're going to have like around 100 horses, 200 units. So it's the first time we're going to do that parade, so I hope it's going to be nice for everybody. So I hope everybody join to ours parade. And also, we, in other countries like Honduras, Colombia, Salvador, they want to join us in that parade. So I hope everybody join that parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. Tonight, I want to express my condolences to the family of Rocío Cecilia Guadarrama, a prominent person in our community originally from Donatiko, Mexico, who passed away this past week. Number two, this year, Fiesta Patrias announces that we have the great honor of a nationally awarded Parade Marshal for his trailblazing effort and education for all children. He also holds the title, being doctor, being a doctor, and also the Director and Superintendent of every single school in all of Lake County. His name is Dr. Michael Cardner. Number three, next, a resident, last meeting accused Fiesta Patrias and myself about an entry in the parade that paints faces. Well, as Pedro noted, we have 200 entries, and let me just assure you, that group is not in our event. Number four, recently, a FOIA was published which reflected a special event application with the name Fudo Fupa. Well, how could that be? If Fiesta Patrias legally belongs, that name belongs to us, that's wrong. We didn't even realize that it happened. Number five, lastly, I just gave you, does everyone have their copy of what I just, just, the, the sheet? It's a copy of City of Waukegan check, number 507-949, in the amount of $1,000, and it's dated October 2024, by Ann Taylor, signed by Ann Taylor. Once again, October 2024, in the amount of $1,000 to the group Juntos, which I believe are here, standing right over there. I'm asking legal counsel to do a criminal investigation if there is any connection of political patronage in regards to the group paid their fee, and then you get a check of reimbursement? Is that what's going on here? Because, sir, I notice there's a pattern. This is not the only group. There's also businesses that were political supporters of Ann Taylor. They too, pay the fee for the business license, and then were reimbursed. If that's the game that was played, that's illegal.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clyde McLemore.
Before, Mr. McLemore, before you start to speak, let's get a motion by, we get a motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Dunworth to seat Alderman Bolton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Good evening, Council, Clyde McLemore, Executive Director and Founder of Black Lives Matter of Lake County. Wanted to say I'm glad to see everybody had a safe weekend. Even though I wasn't here, I missed a rubber ducky. So I'll try to make sure that I get a chance next year to see it. I was at a homecoming in Chicago for stepping, but you know, y'all watch my videos, y'all see I love to dance, and that's my peace of mind. Actually, it saved my life because I had a stroke. And doctor asked me what, what was going on with me. I said, I danced all weekend. And he said, the dancing saves your life. And so the city of Waukegan is hosting, well, not the city of Waukegan, there's a party going on, well, not a party, a stepper event this Saturday, September the 6th, at the Harbor. And I wanted to invite y'all down there so y'all could see this form of dancing. And, you know, it's a real nice event that they're having down there, and I want to invite y'all out to it. You know, this is grown folks stuff. This ain't the little kid stuff, you know? On that note, second, y'all know I got a business on the south side of Waukegan. And I left town on Friday. The neighborhood was cleaned up. I came back yesterday, and there's mattresses. I'm trying to see if we could get an ordinance that if you set a mattress out there, that the landlord get fined, even though landlord not doing it, but he's renting to people who's doing it. And it really looks bad. We trying to clean up the south side, you know? I mean, come on, y'all, y'all can put an ordinance together on there. I know ordinance is not laws, but if the landlord get fined, he gonna take it back to his, his residents, you know, people who's renting from him, you know? We're labor to look good, so people can walk the streets and everything. We've been safe around here, but it really looks bad over there with these mattresses sitting out, chairs sitting out in the middle of the street and stuff like that. We did the, we tried to celebrate, got 40 minutes, celebrate Black August. Y'all know what that is, and then it's also Black Business Month. And I wanted to say thank you, Alderman Felix. He was the only one who showed up, but y'all did support, but I know a few people told me why they didn't show up. But that was good. We had a great turnout, great turnout on August 23rd. We did celebrate, and I just want to say thank y'all and thank the city of Waukegan. That's all I got.
Thank you. Elizabeth Marrero.
Good night. My name is Elizabeth Marrero. This is Mr. Uribe. We're here to speak on behalf of Juntos, which is a non-for-profit organization. We are very excited, we're very happy to be the organizers of this year's parade, Viva la Independencia in Waukegan. This parade has been, you know, it has happened in the community for more than 30 years, and it's an honor to be the organizer. So the parade is scheduled for September 14th, Sunday at noon on Washington Street, the same route, the same traditional route on Batrick going towards downtown in Waukegan. So we want to say thank you to all the city officials who have supported us, the staff, the police department. You guys have been very great. The communication has been very good. So I want to say thank you for that. We also want to invite the community to participate in this event. This event is meant to unify our community, to, to form unity, not to divide. So we're not here to, you know, we're kind of tired of the drama and everything going on, and we are asking everybody to just be one together and walk together, because it doesn't help Waukegan to have so much back and forth, especially this, this event is for culture. It's not meant to be for political, for who has the power, who doesn't. It doesn't matter who organizes the parade, as long as the parade gets done for our people. And again, we want to invite everyone to participate. We hope to see you guys here, there, as you guys do represent Waukegan. This event, it's from the people to Waukegan, to Waukegan. So thank you. If you guys have any questions, please reach out to us. Our phone number is 224-469-7351. Again, 224-469-7351. You can also find us on Facebook or send us an email. We have a website, www.juntoswiththeznfp.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sierra Cunningham. Oh, nope, no, okay. Michelle Lopez.
Well then, what an eventful evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council Members, City Officials, and Residents. I begin by sincerely thanking you for your time and your attention. I come in peace and in the spirit of unity. My name is Michelle Lopez, and I stand before you with gratitude and respect to present this statement. to present this statement on behalf of Fuerza y Unión Tonatiquense, which translates to Strength and Unity from the Tonatico Community. Because of the sensitivity of this matter and the limitation of time, I felt that it was important to write out our statement. Please know that every word comes from a genuine heart. Although all, although not all the members of our committee are present this evening, we do have Alex, we do have Aldo here. It, it does not, I, I can assure you that everyone's strength and commitment is here, although they are absent. Many of, of the community is currently assisting, um, and attending a wake for a fellow Tonatiquense, um, for her passing, and their hearts are here with us in support. I am not here just to introduce our new formally committing, but also to respond to recent headlines stemming from a resident's statement at last month's city council meeting. In that statement, the resident described participants in the Fiesta de Spatillas Parade, the Waukegan, um, smudging black powder on her face and body. A concern that has since been amplified across social media and echoed in local publications. Unfortunately, articles circulated online, particularly to written by an independent local blogger, have gone so far as to insinuate that the resident called for a ban on the group known in the Hispanic community as Warrines, a group of Tonatiquenses, that's us, who proudly participates in the parade representing Tonatico Mexico. In truth, the resident did not ask for a ban. She asked for pre, for preventative measures. This can be personally confirmed by anyone who listens or watches last month's city council meeting in the entirety of the official City of Waukegan YouTube channel. The most recent article further suggests that the city of Waukegan recently held an internal meeting and plans to pursue criminal charges against this group for that action this year. These reports, whether accurate or not, have raised public concerns and sparked dialogue that we, as a community, cannot ignore. As a committee that formally united just a couple of weeks ago, we are proud to say that it's compromise of pioneers and established organizations that have come out of retirement with strong Tonatiquense roots and a trial of, and a trail, a trail of accomplishments, bringing with them decades of leadership and experience. Together, we return with one mission, to preserve, protect, and restore the traditions that have been part of Waukegan for more than three decades. And now we serve as the official and only organizers of the Tonatico Mexico participating group in the, um, Independence.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Okay. Mayor, can I put a motion to omnibus?
What's a consent?
We're gonna do a consent agenda. All right, yeah.
Okay, omnibus, the whole thing.
Okay. Consent agenda, that's what it is. All right. Items four, consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine, and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. If any one board member wishes to have a separate vote on any item, it would be pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item four A, motion to approve.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I, I would like to pull a couple, or do you want us to do it after you read them?
Um, I can do it now, just so I know.
Okay, so E and H?
That's it. Items four A, motion to approve regular city council, uh, regular mini, regular meeting minutes from Monday, August 18th, 2025. Item four B, motion to approve in the payments dated September 1, 2025, in a total amount of $2,609,621.80. Item C, motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated August 22nd, 2025, in a total amount of $2,136,836.98. Motion's item D, motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll, PD, HB, BNCT, cash out, retro manual check, and final payout dated August 22nd, 2025, in a total amount of $56,204. Items four, four F, orders to approving, to dispose of various surplus vehicles and equipment through Omnibon Auction Services, Inc. Items four G, orders to approve amended, amended site plan approval for FHR-Illinois LLC for the construction and operation of American Place, permanent casino at 620 Lakehurst Road. Items four I, a resolution authorizing a proven spending authority to procure professional services from Impact Networking LLC, for the amount not to exceed $45,848. Funding will be sourced from GL debt, GL 100-103-724801. I'm sorry. Oh, okay, uh, $45,858, thank you. Items I, correction, items J, four J, resolution authorizing a proven spending authority to procure professional services from Micro Systems, Inc., for, for a amount not to exceed $60,000. Funding will be secured from GL line 100-607-724801. Items four K, motion to approve Halloween Trick or Treat hours for Sunday, October 26th, 2025, from 2:00 PM to 5:00. Items four L, motion to approve the door-to-door cookie ordering solicitation from December 2nd, December 12th, 2025, to January 15th, 2026, uh, by the Girl Scouts of Greater Chicago and Northwest Indiana. Any motions to them? I'm sorry, I need, I need a motion, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Guzman, uh, for items four, four A through D, F, G, I through L. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Items four E, resolution approving the award of Washington and Keller Repaving Project bid to Peter Baker and Son for not, for, uh, for a not to exceed amount of $3,239,481.67. There's a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Guzman. Uh, any questions to the motion? Yes, I, I'm sorry, Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just curious, because we went through, um, a lot of conversation about this in the spring, um, before the election, and we, um, authorized about a million dollars towards the engineering for, um, Washington Street. But that involved, we, uh, some of us were on a, a panel that looked at Washington Street from Green Bay to the lakefront, basically, and talked about, you know, addressing traffic issues at the bike path and the high school and some other areas. And so we authorized a million dollars in engineering for that particular project. But now we're just repaving what's there. So I'm curious what happened to the million dollars we authorized in engineering for the other way of looking at Washington Street.
Well, I can tackle that, and Chris, you might have to back me up. Um, so you authorized engineering. It was engineering for the street, period. So that engineering that was done for the street went for the entire corridor project. There's a, the, and a quarter project was a $25 million project, which is gonna carry over about three, about to take about three years before they get approval. And that's from the, Chris, help me, the Lake County Mayor's Conference, Mayor's? Lake County Council of Mayors. So it's a project, a $25 million project that we are trying to get awarded. Uh, and that come from the Lake County Council of Mayors. So the million, let me finish, the million dollars that was used, we needed to do the engineering for that street. That's what that engineering was for, ma'am.
Okay, so with, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing you say is we're gonna pave this now.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we're gonna try to get a grant, and in five years, redo everything.
Well, that's a quarter. So the quarter means we're gonna take a whole look, and this goes, this dates back for about 10 years, where we tried to do this. So that quarter looks at Washington Street from Green Bay Road all the way down to Sheridan Road, and it gives it a different, a different total look.
Right, I understand that, but so then, are we gonna be tearing up this pavement we're putting down, is what I guess I'm trying to clarify?
Yes, but within the timeframe of three to five years.
Okay, but it's still $3,200,000 in paving that.
Well, ma'am, we, let me, let me be clear. I want to be clear. And then I, this road is in unrepairable condition. Now, you want to wait five, three to five years and possibly get that? Let's, let's, let's do this now. Let's do this now. Some people may think, and sounds like you, don't think that's a great idea. But the fact is, this road is the worst road in the city of Waukegan, and we need to do something. This is the best thing that we can do in the, in the process of trying to look at the entire quarter, as we've done, I think, twice, trying to get that $25 million project. So, uh, I understand your concern. I had the same thing, but it's something that we need to get completed today.
Also, Alderman Florian, there will be more updates to come in two weeks in regards to it.
I'm, I'm with Alderman Guzman and Alderman Hayes? Oh, okay, Alderman Guzman.
So, this, the worst part of it, in my opinion, is through the second ward. This should definitely get through. I mean, anybody who walks, drives down Washington Street, go from Keller to Lewis Avenue, you can't even go on the slow lane without probably, uh, puncturing a tire or your shocks or a bowl joint or something. This road needs to be done immediately. You don't want it done? Vote no for it. I guarantee you, your constituents will come after you for this road if it is turned down. It needs to be done. It is a priority 100%.
Thank you. Alderman Turner, and then roll call.
Hey, Chris, uh, Director Garland, just for clarification, what section of Washington Street is gonna be, um, repaired under this, with this 3.2 mil? What, what's the?
We're gonna go from Frolic East down to Park Ave.
Got it. Thank you.
And for the Frolic is, what's the, uh, Frolic Lounge, for those who know the Frolic Lounge, all the way down to, uh, the laundromat at South Park. That's where it's at?
I, I do have a quick question.
Alderman Hayes.
Is there a chance that any part of the road that's gonna be repaved under this plan will be salvaged and not have to be torn up, should the bigger project go forward?
We will have more information on that in two weeks. Once we get with the contractors and square everything out, we will have more information.
Okay, thank you.
If it'd help, I can probably get you the, uh, the Washington Street quarter about five or six years. Let me see if I still, still have that someplace, kind of see where that's at, and to give you an idea of what the quarter looks like. All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Item H, resolution authorizing approving the execution of a release and settlement agreement by the, by and between Herman Williams V. and the City of Waukegan's claim number 230906W005 for the amount not to exceed $10.1 million. Uh, there's a motion on the floor, motion by Alderman Newsom.
First, second.
Second by Alderman Guzman. There was a question by Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I, I understand, we talked about this in committee. This is a settlement for a man who was wrongfully incarcerated. Um, and I fully support this, um, settlement. I think, um, the woman who, um, negotiated this for us did a great job. But what I'd like to, um, talk about is, um, how we're paying for the $10.1 million. I think the public should be able to hear where that money is coming from.
Well, it's really coming from the city. If you're talking about, is, is there a specific pot that is gonna be coming from?
Yeah, like how, where, where is the money coming from?
We're gonna be negotiating in a, in two or three different ways. One, we can come right out of our general account. Uh, I know we've had some conversations with, uh, with some banks. We can do some bonding, so it's just different, it's gonna be multiple different ways. But initially, it's gonna be coming out of the general fund, initially, we, we think.
And just to be clear, when you say bonding, that's a 30-year bond you're talking about, which everyone should know? That means a loan, that, when they say bond, it means a loan.
Well, ma'am, uh, that's typical, when you have situations like this, that's typical. Uh, I know you're probably not to be too experienced at these, as I am, but what we will not do, and I shouldn't say we will not do, what we, I don't think we should do, is really take our cash for long-term debt, uh, that the city might have to expense. But, listen, we have options on the table. Let's take a look at all those options, and I certainly will come back here to present to you. One of the things that, when these agreements are concluded, there are times, time standards on them. Sometimes it's 30 days, sometimes it's 60 days, depending on how we get our financing. But, uh, there has been a judgment set on this, and that judgment, uh, is the 10.1. We're gonna go, then go back and find out what's the number of days. We can then determine what our financial options are, and we'll go from there. I know Doc Schwab is working with different, um, financial institutions with some different options, uh, that we think would be in the best interest of the city of Waukegan and the taxpayers. Okay? And any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Oh, business. Um, m- motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Florian, correction, Alderman, uh, Felix, uh, orders approving a variance for an accessory structure setback at 705 Chestnut Street, zoning calendar 276. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton. Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, item six A, six B, resolution approving professional service agreement with Water Treatment Specialists LLC, per section 2-458, parentheses I, parentheses for, professional services, for amount not to exceed $88,400. Motion by Alderman Guzman, second by Alderman Hayes. Any other questions to the motion?
Yes, uh, I spoke to, and we're gonna make an, uh, amendment to the, to the cost of this. What is it, 85,000, right, sir? No, no, uh, yes.
Yeah, you, um, oh, there he is.
Yes, Alderman Guzman wants to take out the vacation time, so it comes out to 3,400, so not to exceed 85,000.
Okay. All right, we got the same motion on the floor to amend, uh, resolution approving professional service agreement with Water Treatment Specialists LLC, per section 2-458, parentheses I, parentheses for, professional services, for amount not to exceed $85,000. There's a, there's an amendment to the motion. There's a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Uh, motion's passed and carried. Uh, motion by Alderman Guzman, second by, by Alderman Turner, uh, resolution approving professional services agreement, uh, with the Water Treatment Specialists LLC, per section 2-458, parentheses I, parentheses for, professional services, for amount not to exceed $85,000. for amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Yes, all right, there's a motion, a second, no questions. Roll call please.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Item seven A, there being none, item, item eight, there being none, item nine, closing items, Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Donaworth.
Yeah, could I interrupt for one second? Alderman Donaworth, I have to pick up my daughter. Would you mind if I just jumped in really quick, so that I could, okay, thank you so much. Typically I pass my, my Alderman time, but I want to invite anybody, um, to reach out to discuss the grocery tax. I know that's going to come before us, and I want to invite as many people as possible to reach out to any one of us, or all of us, email, text message, phone call, I'm interested to know your opinions, uh, one way or the other. I think that this is something where we really need to listen to what everybody has to say, and, and take it seriously. A lot of people come up before us, and they say, "We didn't know, we weren't educated." Um, there's a whole host of grievances, I think, with how information gets out, but this is still the best way to do it. So please, call any one of us, call all of us, uh, we want to hear from you. So, thank you very much, and Alderman Donaworth, thank you for the accommodation.
Alderman Donaworth.
Thank you. Hope, um, everybody enjoyed your Labor Day weekend. I know I was out of town, uh, happened to be in Missouri at my mother-in-law's house, we celebrated her hundred and second birthday. And, uh, she's still with us, she's still sharp, she just has a little bit of eye problems, so we went out for dinner and, and she was still really good, and so, guess my wife's going to live that long too. Could be good. No, it will be good. Um, I want to thank the, uh, city employees, who I talk to almost every day, and all the staff. Everybody takes care of whatever I need, answers all the questions that I have, and definitely returns phone calls when I leave them. Um, I'm working on some, um, calming devices over on Blanchard Road, um, over by Greenwood School, Linden, that whole area there, and then, um, just, um, working with the city on that, and then, just, just a couple, tree trimming things. I have a couple, couple tree, uh, trees that are in pretty bad shape, and, um, I've definitely made, uh, uh, an email, and they're taking care of it, and, uh, just want to, uh, advise everybody, please be safe. If you see something, you know, definitely call the police, or if it's something that's not any big deal, or you just want to tell someone, give me a call, I can see what I can do for you. And if I can't do it, I can always give a call to the city, for City Yards, or someone else, Code Enforcement, or, or someone to take care of it. Thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you Madam Clerk. Um, I just want to emphasize, um, what the mayor said about the air show. This is the first time they've done a two-day show, it is coming up this Saturday and Sunday. There will, there will be practice on Friday afternoon, um, there will be a lot of noise during practice. I'm being told that there's, um, uh, a lot of loud noise due to Navy F-18s maneuvering fast and low. So be aware, Seventh and Eighth Ward, it's going to be noisy Friday afternoon, and then of course, Saturday and Sunday during the, the actual shows. There will also be, um, pyrotechnic displays and smoke during the event, so don't assume something tragic has happened just because you're seeing smoke from the air show. And as the mayor said, tickets are only available online, so plan ahead for your tickets, and, and, uh, get online to get them. Um, I know we don't have our normal corporate council here tonight, but I had asked a few weeks ago, um, if we could update our ethics, um, policy, so I'm hoping we can get some kind of, uh, response on that. I'd, I'd like to see us, um, maybe re-sign the ethics agreement that we had, uh, been presented with in the previous administration, and, um, maybe even make it go a little bit further. There's been some things that have happened that weren't considered, a violation of our ethics code, and I think that we should reconsider that. Um, I'm also curious, Alderman Martinez, if you've talked yet with the chief about, um, with your safety committee, about the ATV and the motorized bikes yet? We really need something. I, I was coming down Washington Street on my way here, and there was a grown man on a very teeny tiny motorized bike, right on the sidewalk, going down Washington, past Lilac Ledge. Um, and I, I think we're, we're waiting, you know, we're a tragedy waiting to happen with these things. I saw some young girls in my neighborhood last week, on the teeny tiny ones on a sidewalk, running through the intersection, no helmets, nothing. I'm kind of surprised parents don't have a little reserve of having their kids ride these things that go thirty miles an hour with no helmet, when they have never had driver's ed or anything. So anyway, I'm curious, Alderman Martinez, maybe you can mention it during your Alderman time, if you've just, you know, got that ball rolling. Um, one of the residents talked about towing at, at Alderman ti, I mean, Audience Time. Um, I, I would love to see us tackle this, Mayor. I think we should have, um, a policy about what the maximum charge should be. I don't know that there should be a towing contract, I don't think we should be in the business of choosing who people work with, but I do think we should be able to say as a community, you cannot take advantage of our people, and you can't overcharge for towing, storage, whatever. There should be some kind of maximum amount that they can charge in our community, um, so that people aren't, aren't having to pay these exorbitant amounts for their cars. Um, and lastly, I wanted to talk about the environmental committee a little bit. Um, Mr. Ruckstallis brought it up, that he'd like to hear about coal ash and ETO, I do believe we will be discussing that. He also asked about Yeoman Creek, the solar panels that are there, um, are going to benefit the school district, but then there's also a program where residents can apply to get some of the, um, excess energy that's being produced there. So you can look for that online, for the Yeoman Creek Solar Project. So, thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye, yes, thank you Madam Clerk. Um, I want to thank my constituents for your weekly, or daily calls, and keeping me updated with your concerns. I also want to thank our staff here for all your hard work and dedication. And also, as you know, in the first ward, there's been so many ceremonies, and block parties, and events, sometime I have two or three on the same day. Uh, thank you for the, bringing life and empowerment to the community. And also, it's true that, uh, Public Works is constantly picking up mattresses, and living room sets, and uh, all the trash is constantly put out on, throughout our neighborhood. So with that being said, uh, we're going to do a Marcus Street cleanup, uh, Saturday, starting at ten AM, and hopefully, the crew will get out there and cut back the bushes, or whatever. Uh, so, as you know, this road has been adopted by our concerned constituents, and so we will be out there cleaning up all the trash, as well as throughout the ward. Thank you, that's all I have.
Alderman Guzman.
Okay, good evening, I have quite a bit tonight. Uh, first, I guess I want to start off with the speed bumps. What a great thing. Thank you Mayor, thank you Public Works Director Garland. Uh, I mean, I've gotten so many compliments on these, um, uh, first in history, I know it's been talked over many, many, many years, in different administrations, and this administration pulled it off, and finally got them on the road. Second ward, I get so many compliments, they want more, and more, and more. Okay, so I'm very, very happy about that. Um, there's a couple more streets are to come this year, and then we'll talk about what else is next for next year. Earlier tonight, they spoke, spoke about the rubber ducky. I mean, that thing was pretty cool, it was like sixty feet high, I mean, took pictures. I actually walked around, um, I actually, it wa, it was such a great event, I spoke to like, three or four businesses that were there, food trucks and stuff like that, they actually sold out, by like, two or three o'clock in the afternoon. So they closed their doors after that. That's a successful event. And it was something simple, a big, huge rubber duck, which anybody and everybody can relate to their childhood, and that's what brings the heart into it, and brings the child back out of you, no matter what age you are. For remembering the shower when you first, uh, received that. Another thing, I'm very, very excited to, finally, the casino's going forward, uh, phase one is at least moving forward. It got approved, so, very happy, so, pretty soon, hopefully, we see, start seeing construction. Everything looked pretty cool to me, um, so I'm happy to see that. Uh, next, uh, uh, we're going to have a dumpster cleanup on Twelfth and Greenfield this time. It's not going to be on Lewis and, um, Washington Park, I mean, Doug Dale and Washington Park, I'm sorry. So it's going to be on Twelfth and Greenfield, and there's more enforcement's going to come to that area, okay? So we've been getting a lot, I've been getting a lot of complaints about that. Uh, and more enforcement's going to come down to, uh, that area. Uh, just because we're the south side, that doesn't mean you can dump on the south side, okay? I'm a, we're trying to keep it clean, we're trying to fix it up. Uh, the, um, Lake County DLT is fixing up the bike path, they're finally going to, uh, pave the areas where all the grass, and all the areas where people just park and just dump their stuff, it's all going to get redone, okay? I've complained, and complained, and complained, and finally, they're moving forward. I was upset that they started north instead of south, but, it is what it is, but it will be done, okay? The south side is going to get improved, one way or another. We, we got a, we got a speed bump there, we're getting more to come. The, um, the new, uh, area that, uh, Lake County's going to fix up by the bike path, and I'm going to be putting in for those streets to be redone also over there. It's going to be an uplift, but the south side has to step up, okay? Okay, so, uh, Alderman Hayes said about the one percent tax, uh, please reach out to me, eight four seven, three nine oh, twenty-six ninety. Uh, I, I've already, um, spoken to some restor, residents, and, uh, gone from there. I don't think it's right, but, uh, I'm willing to have the conversation and go from there. Willow Road, and, I, I mean, yes, Willow Road, the update on Willow Road, I know, I, I get two people that call me every week on Willow Road. Every week, all the time. Uh, so I spoke to the engineer, they're, they're still waiting on one more step, and then after that, I dot can get up on top of it, we're looking a few more months to get that road opened up, hopefully. But it is, uh, uh, on our end now, and then we send it back to the state. And then the state, uh, will, uh, do the signage, or whatever, else, they need to be done. Washington and Keller, a huge, huge win tonight. I understand that one Alderman made comments about the, not being redone, but, that is the number one street that we get complaints on, the number one. You can't go down from, from west to east without passing the second ward between Keller and Lewis, and go on lane two, which is supposedly the slow lane. Once you go on there, forget about it. You have to literally go down to the first lane, so I'm very happy. If we have to tear it down, and rebuild it, and tear it down again, I'd be more than happy to pay for it, because it is so ridiculous. Keep smirking and laughing, because it is. You'll see how many complaints you get on this. It is so ridiculous on this road. And I'm happy that this is moving forward, and everybody can, uh, move on. All right, tow fees. Okay, I remember bringing this up with the previous administration. All right, the Alderman that made the complaint also said, "No, we shouldn't get involved into, um, businesses and how much they charge," and now, it's a different administration, now, the whole opinion changes. So, you can't have it both ways. I tried to get this fixed a long time ago, you said no. Okay? So, if anybody needs to get ahold of me, it's eight four seven, three nine oh, twenty-six ninety. Thank you, have a good night.
Alderman Martinez.
Thank you Madam Clerk and City Council. Uh, I'm going to be brief, uh, first I would like to invite, uh, all the residents and all the citizens in Waukegan, uh, to the Brookside Campus Homecoming Parade, this is the high school. Uh, this will be held on Friday, September twenty-sixth, from five thirty. Um, the meeting will, the meeting grounds will be at Brookside Campus, and it'll be the same route as they, they took in last year. Uh, there is more information forthcoming, I will make sure that I, uh, am boots to the ground, and make sure that I, uh, drop off flyers and answer any questions that, uh, my constituents may have. But the route is going to be from Brookside to Flossmore Avenue, Flossmore Avenue to University Avenue, University Avenue to Tiffany Drive, Tiffany Drive to Lydia Avenue, Lydia Drive to North Martin, back on Brookside, and, uh, back to the parking lot at, at Brookside Campus there. So, the theme is Starry Nights. Um, like I said, I have more information forthcoming, but please keep in mind, we have to support our, our high school, and afterwards, there is the, uh, the homecoming, uh, varsity game at the, uh, Weiss Field, and that is going to be at seven o'clock. So I welcome everyone, please us all, support our youth or high school, and, uh, uh, make sure that we're there present. I also want to thank, uh, again, Waukegan Public Works, Mr. Garland, and also Lonzo, and also the Waukegan Public School, liaison, uh, Mr. Moten, for last week's weekend dumpster drop, uh, it was a huge success, that was held last Saturday, from, uh, eight to twelve. Thank you for that, I got a lot of compliments on that. Uh, also, I just want to remind, remind my, my constituents, again, I'm seeing it a lot, please, mattresses must be wrapped in plastic. All right, there's a lot of mattresses out there that are, are just thrown there, and I do my very best to try to bring it to the attention, I, either I'm dropping off, it's like a formal seat, uh, to, to get it picked up, uh, but there is a lot of mattresses out there that, uh, people are just discarding, and, you know, I don't blame LRS again, because those things, I, I've seen some real, real unsanitary mattresses out there, so, please, if you are going to discard a mattress, it has to be in plastic, and you get, you can get them at Amazon, you can get them at Home Depot, and they're less than ten dollars. So, um, I encourage anyone to please follow those regulations and policy, that we can avoid, uh, any problems, so. Um, also, as, uh, want to talk about the, uh, the, uh, Alderman Florian, of course, with the, with the, with the bikes, and the, uh, the speed bikes that are out there, yeah, there is a problem, um, but, uh, I will organize, and I will develop a, a committee to make sure we address this. I too am having problems with, uh, constituents complaining that there is out there with, with, uh, no helmets on, up and down the streets, disregarding the, the lights, and also police officers too. So, that is definitely on my radar, and I will come up with something, and we're going to get this organized, and get some, something, uh, an ordinance of some sort, but, uh, uh, please know that, uh, I will be on that, and I'll have something for you next time, okay? Uh, I, that's pretty much I have, I, again, the, the duck, that was, that was such a great event, everybody was so well behaved. Uh, congratulations to all the parties who participated and put it together, um, it was so good to see so many people there, and there was a lot of people there, but very well done. A lot of, a lot of happy children, a lot of happy faces, and, and that's what it's all about. And so I, I congratulate all those who partook in that, and also organized it, uh, and I look forward to the, to the next, in twenty twenty-eight, like the mayor mentioned. Um, if you need to get ahold of me, I can reach that eight four seven, three nine zero, twenty-six eighty-nine. I just ask my constituents to please be very mindful, please be safe, and let's all be great neighbors. Thank you, have a great day.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you. Uh, today's, uh, Sep- September second, our next meeting's going to be after one of the biggest parades in, in the county. With that being said, um, many of us here in Lake County have felt a growing sense of fear and uncertainty due to the changes in the national climate and rhetoric. I want to speak to that openly, because moments like this calls for unity, as we have heard often, and we need compassion and courage. I want to be clear, uh, to our community, our residents, that you're not alone, whether you're black, white, brown, whether your roots are in this country run deep, or you're building a new life here, your civil rights matter, your dignity matters, and you matter. Uh, now more than ever, we must stand together as Americans, and a proud residents of this- Now more than ever, we must stand together as Americans and proud residents of this community. We cannot allow fear to divide us or silence us. This is not who we are. We are at our strongest when we support one another and look out for our neighbors and choose hope over fear. I ask you, if you do have the privilege and means, I encourage you to continue shopping locally. Support the small businesses that are the heartbeat of our city. These businesses are owned by our friends, families, and neighbors, and they need us now more than ever. Let's remember, standing together isn't just about what we oppose. It's about what we believe in, inclusion, respect, and justice. These aren't just ideals. These are the foundation of our community and of this country. So let's continue to care for one another with strength, kindness, and unity. Let's move forward, not in fear, but in purpose. So I wanted to make that statement heading towards the upcoming parades. Let's all stick together as a community. Recently, I did have a downtown meeting, and for me, it was a success. It was a success because it targeted mainly the concerns of the downtown, which in and itself, it's just a lot going on in the downtown area. We had our meeting at Alani Banquets. I want to say thank you publicly to Wendy for allowing us to spend time together at her banquet hall on Genesee. It was critical for one reason, to listen directly to the people who live, work, and invest in our downtown. Some people might say that, you know, they don't vote for the ones that don't live here, but they live here. They spend most of their hours in our downtown area, and they invest in our downtown. So this gave us an opportunity to talk about a lot of things, ranging from parking fairness, valet operations, sidewalk projects, and alley improvements, food truck locations and development updates. One key thing that came up over and over is communication, which I will say we need to do better of, and we're working on it. You should have seen when I came in. The alarms are ringing. We need to make sure we communicate with our downtown residents. It's only fair. And I'll work with that, with our staff and with the support of the mayor. And so those are the things that came up. They're bringing residents and business owners, mainly business owners, I would say. And city staff was a huge help. You know, they offered detailed information. And I can only answer general, but the details, our staff, the day-to-day staff that are, you know, in the grind, are the ones who helped me out with this meeting. So I want to say thank you to publicly, to Juan Garcia, our finance director, who I asked to go over a little bit over the budget, what that means and what it means for next year. Noel, also from Planning and Zoning, along with Tyler Williams, our planner, went over a lot of information in terms of what our plan for Waukegan is. Chris Garland as well, Director of Public Works, David Motley, Director of Public Relations, Steve Lindsey, Building Commissioner, Commander George Valco, Neighborhood Policing, and Officer Michael Neuer, Thomas Mailard show up as well. Thank you so much. Together, we helped out, we answered a lot of questions. I think that there was a common theme, again, we need to communicate better. But it created a space for accountability and open communication and partnership. Moving forward, these meetings will continue to be a cornerstone of how we rebuild Waukegan and move Waukegan forward, ensuring that decisions are shaped by the voices of the people most affected by them. So I want to say thank you to everyone that showed up. Lastly, for this, the big duck, and honestly, it's an example of what bringing in attraction to Waukegan can be like. People will show up. We just need to make sure we have these events keep coming or these ideas keep coming. We can't do it alone. You know, we need the input of our community to make these events happen. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to announce the next Operation Clean Sweep for the 5th Ward. The disposal dumpster will be Saturday, September 13th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. I'm sure everyone is probably aware of the items that you cannot bring, which is yard waste, liquids, tree stumps, concrete, brick, stone, rocks, hazardous waste, flammable materials, paints, things of that nature. For things that you, if you have a question regarding what you can bring, please reach out, 847-390-2691. Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have several items I want to bring to your attention. Excuse me. Next Thursday is September 11th, and there's the 24th anniversary of the deadliest terrorist attack in human history. It claimed the lives of 2,996 people, including 2,977 innocent victims and 19 hijackers who carried out these heinous acts. The toll of that tragic day extended far beyond those initial numbers, creating ripples of loss that continue to this day. Among those who perished were the brave first responders who rushed toward danger to save others. 343 members of the New York City Fire Department and New York Fire Patrol gave their lives in service. 71 law enforcement officers died at the World Trade Center and on the ground in New York City. At the Pentagon in Arlington County, Virginia, 55 military personnel lost their lives. When United Airlines Flight 93 crashed into a field near Shanksville, Pennsylvania, a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service officer also perished, among 44 souls onboard. The attacks transcended national boundaries, as at least 102 countries lost citizens in this tragedy, reflecting the international scope of loss. Initially, 2,603 victims were confirmed to have died in the World Trade Center site. However, recognition of the attacks, excuse me, the attacks lasting impact led to the inclusion of those who died from illnesses caused by exposure to toxins at Ground Zero. By 2011, three additional deaths from toxic exposure were added to the official count, raising the World Trade Center death toll to 2,606. The legacy of suffering extended well beyond that September morning. As of August 2013, medical authorities had determined that 1,140 people who worked, lived, and studied in Lower Manhattan during the attacks developed cancer as a result of exposure to toxins at Ground Zero. By September 2014, over 1,400 rescue workers who responded in the days and months following the attacks had died. The tragedy even claimed unborn lives, with at least 10 pregnancies lost as a result of September 11th. Recent advances in DNA analysis continue to bring closure to families with three more World Trade Center victims identified in 2025, bringing the confirmed death toll at that site to 1,653. Yet approximately 1,100 victims remain unidentified. Their names inscribed on the 911 memorial as enduring reminders of lives cut short and the ongoing commitment to their memory. And I read that because we spend a lot of time talking about social calendars and feel-good shit, but we don't pay much attention to the sacrifices, sacrifices that were made by those who were heroes and victims. And I think it's something, you know, we used to say we shall never forget, but somehow, we do. No one here mentioned this, and no one's going to other than me. On a happier note, next month, October 13th, is the 250th birthday of the U.S. Navy, of which I'm a proud veteran. And I will be meeting with Commanding Officer, Great Lakes Naval Station, to see how I can participate in the celebration of that great event. The grocery tax was mentioned, and briefly, I don't know how much you guys know, but basically, we've always, we've had a 1% grocery tax since, I think, 1990. The state legislature has passed legislation to remove that tax. It's not going to be collected by the state anymore, but the city of Waukegan and other home rural municipalities, we have an opportunity to institute our own 1% grocery tax, and that's what was mentioned by one of the other Alderman earlier, Mr. Hayes. So we'll be having discussions about whether or not we, the city of Waukegan, should implement that tax. The speed bumps. I agree with Alderman Guzman. I've had a lot of positive feedback, tremendous feedback, not only feedback about what's in place, but numerous requests for speed bumps. I had three requests today. I just texted Alderman Florian. Someone sent me one request for her ward. We're having continual conversations about this. Chris and I spoke briefly about it again today. We met on it last week. The mayor and I have spoken about it. It's something I've been trying to get done for about 20 years. And every administration has had some resistance to it. I was able to get three in last year. The new mayor, with Sam in the seat, he and I are working together a lot more closely than previous administrations. We're getting this done. So stand by. One thing we need to do and think about for all the Aldermen is a more comprehensive look, a study, if you will, of what our traffic patterns are and what traffic calming devices are needed in each ward. If you want speed bumps or speed bumps, call your Alderman. Five. I'll have my ward meeting. It's going to be September 24th at North School, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. I have a dumpster out on the 6th Ward on Saturday, the 27th, between 8:00 and 12:00 p.m., and that'll be at Glenflora and Chestnut. And with that, make a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I forgot to mention my dumpster is this Saturday at Midlane 4601 York House from 8:00 to 12:00. Sorry.
Okay, yes, everybody. Operation Clean Sweep, 6th and 7th Ward. And there's a motion by Sierra, my daughter's former babysitter, Alderman Newsom, and second by Alderman Martinez. Any questions to the motion? Motion to adjourn. You said it early. A motion to adjourn. Say hello, Sierra.
Where's Sierra?
Hi, Sierra. All those in favor? Motion's passed and carried. Have a great week, everyone.